Tracy is looking at getting onto the meeting. She was having some computer issues. So hopefully she'll be able to join us soon. So I'll begin with the approval of the agenda.
So move Boleen.
Motion is made by Boleen. I will second that. Any discussion or questions on? On anything? Hearing nothing. We will. You had to admit Jeff here. My computer is being kind of difficult apparently right now. So Jeff is coming in here. Alright, um, hearing nothing else, we will vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Let's see, I don't know if Jeff's, he's connecting to audio, so I'll come back to him. Tracy is not here yet. Melissa?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. And Jeff, we're just, um, voting on the approval of the agenda for the TNT meeting here. Do you want to unmute and vote, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, with that, motion carries. New business. Number one is the public truth and taxation hearing for the 2020 payable 2021 property tax levy. And we have the lovely Lindsay here with us to take over this part of the meeting.
Alright, can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes.
Alright. Well, thanks everyone for listening in. We just want to go through the truth and taxation hearing here tonight. So I will begin. In Minnesota, the truth and taxation law requires for certain steps to be done before adopting the levy for the following year. One of them is they require you to mail a notice to all property tax orders in the county for any increases, changes, what the different levies mean in terms of dollars. And then they also require you to conduct a public truth and taxation hearing, which we are doing tonight. The Minnesota property tax system is somewhat complex. The document itself, if you were to go out and take a look at it, is quite long and there's many complex formulas with it. Although just do a brief overview to kind of give you the basic information on how it works. So how it starts out is that state law determines the maximum amount a school district may levy. This is referred to as a levy limitation. These maximum levy amounts are computed at the state level for each school district. Then the school board approves whether they want to do the maximum amount or a lesser amount, which is known as under levy. And they do this by majority vote to certify the levy. We do that twice a year. In September, we do the proposed levy. And here in December, before the end of the year, we will certify the final levy. And then this amount after it's been certified, then it's spread across all the different taxable properties in the county. And how it's done is the county assessor determines the estimated market value by January 2nd of each year for all taxable property in their jurisdiction. The estimated market value is also reduced for certain statutory exclusions such as the market value exclusion. And then this results in a taxable market value. So you can see the formula on the slide. The next is the tax capacity that is calculated and that is done by multiplying that taxable market value and taking that by the class rate to get to your net tax capacity. And this class rates are determined in law for the type of classification your property is. There are several, several different property classes. As you can see here, here are the main ones. You have your residential, which is the largest, makes about 50 to 44%. You also have your commercial, your farm, your apartment, etc. These, the type of classification your property is also impacts the amount of taxes you pay. Residential homes carry and usually always carry the majority of it just because the amount of residential versus commercial and industrial property within your county. This gives you a snapshot where we were compared to last year into the tax bill for 20. Is it ordered? Yeah.
Can you, you've got farms on that list back there?
Yes.
Okay, now is that personal farms or is that business farms or how does that work?
It's all farms excluding one acre and your residential home. So it's anything above that one acre.
Okay, so, so, uh, a business proprietor on a farm, is that considered a business or not?
No, it's still under the farms. Commercial and industrial are only going to be your other non tillable land is probably the best way to put it.
So a self-employed business wouldn't be listed as commercial, would it, or not?
Are you talking because they farm and have tillable land?
No, just a regular business, self-employed.
If they would probably fall under that commercial, not industrial, depending on what type of business they are, yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep. Alright. So then the next formula to get to where we need to calculate the total levy is you're taking your net task, net tax capacity and dividing it by that sales ratio to get what they call the adjusted net tax capacity. And why they do that is because each county assessor is going to assess properties in different ways. And so then there can cause some differences. So they use this sales ratio to try to make it more uniform and get down to what the actual net tax capacity is going to be the adjusted, that is. Then you, the final step then is to calculate the local property tax rate. And how you do that is you take your total levy divided by that adjusted net tax capacity that we just calculated on the last slide to get down to your local tax rate. So here's a slide that shows where Bold is in comparison to surrounding districts around them. And as you can see from page 20 to 21, we've gone down in the local tax rate. And the reason for this is, and which you'll see a little bit better on a future slide, is that our bond payable is going to be paid off here in fiscal year 21. So the debt will be gone for the district. So that debt service fund is going to be dropping off. So that's lowering our tax rate because we're taking that debt service out of the picture. So you can see that we're the second to the bottom and below the medium compared to other districts surrounding us.
So what about the following year? Would that, would we be back up then or not?
No, we'll just stay more level because unless there's any debt incurred, that debt service fund is going to be gone until, until there's a need for one. So essentially then we're just going to be more level. You're not going to see the jump from one year to the other. The only, the only other fluctuations you're going to have are your assessed market values and any other type of referendums that may be in place. That'll be the fluctuation to see, but you won't see material jump like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so back here is the net tax capacity. And now we're going to look at it for the referendum market value and how we are compared to other districts around us. And as you can see, we're also the second to lowest here and also below the medium when it comes to the referendum market value. So then the next step is to take the gross property tax for the parcel or property that you're looking at and you're going to multiply that, the local tax rates times the adjusted net capacity to get where the property tax is going to be. And if you remember from past years, we started talking about this egg tax credit that is available. And in 2021 compared to last year, it increased 5% and it's going to go up another five and then another 10 till we're up to 70%. So for payable 2021, the egg tax credit on bonds is going to be at 55%. And where you can see that, here's an example of your property tax statement. And down in step two there, you can see where that credit is going to show. So what happens is it comes from the general fund of the state, not from the district. It's a budgeted amount from the state where the taxpayer is going to get a credit back for those bond referendum amounts. And that's where you'll find it on your property taxes. Here's a graph that gives you a good picture of why it's tough for Minnesota school districts, especially smaller ones, to balance their budget on an annual basis. And this just kind of shows you that if inflation rate was applied to the general education aid formula that we get for our adjusted pupil units, that there's a $639 difference per pupil unit. So where the funding formula should be with that inflation is at 7,206 per pupil unit. And currently we're at 6,567. So you can kind of see since 2003 where that gap is going and why districts go to the borders for operating referendums to try to make up that difference to cover the cost of inflation and all the expenses that are needed on an annual basis. So who and what impacts your tax bill? Well, law and policies are set up at the state level. The school boards will approve levies. Also the fluctuations in property tax values based upon where the county assessor sets your property value at. Also another big part of the formula is where our adjusted pupil units are at, both adjusted pupil units and residential. And then there are laws in place that have state equalization aid up to a certain point. So that's somewhere the state kicks in as well. So this kind of gets you through kind of how the formula works and how the levy process works. Now I just kind of want to go over some of the prior year and budgeted numbers to kind of show you where we're sitting revenue expense wise. So this is a good graph of how much Bold's revenue is from property taxes. And you can see it's not the smallest chunk, but it is a small chunk compared to the state aids in your federal. And then there's other things like your miscellaneous revenue and interest and takes items like this. But you can see we're usually pretty consistent across the board, how much of it's the different sources between state, federal and property taxes. So here's some pie charts that will kind of show you. Each of the district's budget is broke up by fund. So the general fund obviously being the biggest fund that we have. And 12% of the general fund is levy and 88% is other. Food service does not have any levy dollars, excuse me, it's all fees for service. It can also be claims that get reimbursed through state and federal monies. The next one is your community service fund and 24% of that fund is levy and 76% is others, which is usually some state aid and it's also fees for services type situations. And then the debt service fund, especially with A credits, because that's coming through the state. Your debt service fund used to be almost all levy, but with the change in how the A credit comes through, we're about 66% levy and 34% other revenue. And that other revenue would be in the A credits that come through. So this kind of gives you a pie chart to show you how much of the levy is distributed by funds. And with the general fund being the biggest fund and where the instruction of our children come from, it gets 93% of the levy distribution. And then 4% is our community service fund and 3% is debt service.
Part of that 93% is wages also, correct? Not just for the students?
No, this is, this is just talking how much of the levy. So when you're taking our total levy that you guys will be approving in December, all it is is showing you how much of the levy goes to the general fund, how much of it goes to the community service and how the debt service. It's not showing you expenses or anything. It's just breaking up the levy by percentage by fund to kind of show you that the majority of it goes to the general fund where it should go. So here is where the levy is sitting for payable 21. And this gives you a good picture of what I was talking before about how the debt service is going to be dropping off because we're going to be done paying on the bonds payable. So that's why when you look at it compared to last year, we see a large decrease. And the majority of it is in that debt service fund. The general fund is going to be some adjustments for different types of levies, maybe a decline in adjusted pupil units. Or it could also be a decline in market value. But as you can see, it's only 1.7% and the majority of the total decrease of 19.9% is because of the debt service dropping off. So here is some graphs next. That's the budget for 2021, which we're currently in. And it kind of gives you, this first one gives you an idea of what the revenues look like, how they actually came in from last year and what the budgeted 2021 revenues are. And we are right now budgeted to have an increase from fiscal year 20. One of the things that stands out to me in this slide and for your guys' information in the food service, you can see that that does decrease, which is a conservative approach because we didn't know how we were going to start the fiscal year with the pandemic. So essentially in 1920, from the closure till the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, we were running under the summer food program to make sure everyone got meals. And that's at a higher reimbursement rate from the federal government. So our revenues jumped up in food service because of we were running under the summer food program, not knowing where we're going to start and how we were going to start the 2021 school year. We're budgeted as if the pandemic wasn't there and things were going back to normal. So that's why you see the decrease in revenue because the reimbursements under the normal food program are smaller than the summer food program. So just to kind of give you an idea of why that is. The next slide here is just to show you the revenues by fund to show you that the general fund is the biggest fund and brings in the most revenue. And then you have your food service, community service and your debt service. And you can see we're pretty consistent between the actual 20 and where we are budgeted for 2021. I'm going to move on to expenditures next. And this gives you by fund, the actual expenditures where we came in for 1920 and where we're budgeted for 2021. And then the same thing here when the, we did the budgeting process for the adopted budget with the unknowns that were there for the pandemic, we budgeted to as things were going to go back to normal. So here kind of gives you by percentage how our general fund dollars are spent. So we're breaking it up by program area. And as you can see, that over half of our budget is for instructional programs. And that includes everything that we need to run the education and the programs that we have. District and building administration are at nine and a half percent. We have people support services at 14.1%. Those expenses are your transportation. It's also going to be things like your nursing, your guidance counselor, your social worker. Those type of expenses are going to be under people support. And then you have your building operation maintenance and that's obviously going to be LTFM expenditures running through there, any supplies, custodial type prepared maintenance that need to be done, I don't fit under LTFM.
Wouldn't that number be less since we got rid of, we're not using Broad Island now? Wouldn't that building operation and maintenance be less?
But if you remember, we approved that 10-year LTFM plan every year. And we have expenditures in that, so basically a conservative approach is to budget your 10-year plan. So our budgeting, the levy dollars that are going to come in for any potential repair and maintenance that needs to be done. Because remember, even though right now we're only running one site, you still have to keep up with repair and maintenance. And if a boiler goes out, you're looking at a huge dollar amount. So you're going to budget all your LTFM dollars because the chances, you know, of something happening, you want to have it budgeted for.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So how did that, how did that building and district administration go up so much?
Um, I'm guessing the reason it's up is it's a little deceiving because the fact is we seen, you're going to, we seen savings, which you'll kind of see when you see the audit presentation. But because we were out for three months in the last spring, our expenditures did go down. I mean, we didn't use as many supplies and materials. We didn't have some of the fees for service we normally would have had because COVID hit. So some of it, some of the differences are hard to see. And there's actually a good slide in Brenda's presentation that will be coming up. That kind of shows you how big of a jump that some of these swings can, can have. But to be conservative, you need to budget for things to go back to normal. So that's why it looks like it's, it's up quite a bit. But it all looked to make sure I'm not, not thinking of something. But I think a lot of it's probably the fact that we ran an operating referendum. And two, we have, we had savings because of COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright, so here's a pie chart, gives you a good picture, just kind of what we went over in number format. Here is a way to show it in a pie chart. And it's to show that 58.2% of our costs are going to instructional programs, right where they should be. And the last slide here that I have is the budget publication, which I believe you have all seen and approved at the November regular board meeting. And this just shows you by fund balance area and by funds where we ended fiscal year 20. And with that adopted budget that we were just going over for revenue and expenses, where we are projecting our fund balance to end at the end of fiscal year 2021. So that is all that I have for my presentation. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I'll be, thank you.
Alright, thank you Lindsay.
Thank you.
So what's going to happen tonight? We need to adjourn the meeting and then at seven o'clock, we will start the next meeting. But we're just going to stay right here. I just did one, I didn't know if one would run into the next. So what we'll do now is I'll ask for somebody to make a motion to adjourn. And then we'll do the whole voting thing and then I'll just pause the meeting. And if you want to take a five-minute break, that would be great. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move Jill.
Thank you Melissa. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. And any discussion or questions on adjourning? We won't hear any. I'm not sure why I even asked that. We will go ahead and vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Alright, we'll see you back here in about five minutes. Thank you. Okay, so as it is seven o'clock, I'm going to call this special meeting of the Broad Island Olivia Lake Lilian Independent School District, number 2534. I'm going to call it to order and we'll begin with the approval of our agenda. And there is one thing to add to the agenda. We're going to re-number under new business. Number three is going to be resolution of school board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. And then number three, which is facilities update, will become number four. And number five will become online learning plan. So please make those corrections on your agendas. Or just keep it in mind as we, when we get there. So with that correction, I will make, I will make a motion to approve the agenda if somebody would second.
I'll second Jill.
Thank you Tracy. Any discussion or questions on anything? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Sandy.
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Okay, I didn't hear you. So Jeff?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
And Jamie. Jill, how about Jill? That's the last one there. Alright, I am, I am much better. So motion carries. It's not COVID doing this, so. Alright. Moving on to new business. Number one, our audit report, which tonight will be presented by Brenda Parsley from Conway, Duth and Schmusing. So I am going to turn it over to Brenda. And welcome Brenda.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
No.
Perfect. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I even tried this earlier. Still struggling.
It's alright. It'll happen. There you go.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, so I'm Brenda Parsley. I've been with CDS now for almost five years. I'm the manager there and been on this audit for as long as I've been with the company. Like to start off by saying thank you for allowing us to do the audit for the Bold School District again. And I hope you're all staying safe, especially in the midst of this pandemic. Also like to mention that we really appreciate all the hard work and time that Lindsay and Jody and Joy put into helping this audit go so smoothly. And then there's the financial statements and the management letter. But the PowerPoint that I'm going to go through is just going to pull out some of those key highlight, things to highlight. I'll pause in between slides and Lindsay or Dale or anyone, if you have anything that you want to add, please feel free to jump on as well. It was just a table of contents. First is the independent auditors report. This is essentially what you hire us to do. And it gives the end result. It also outlines the responsibilities of both the district and CDS. So the district's responsibility is the financial statements. And our responsibility is to express an opinion based on our audit. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And it's performed to obtain a reasonable assurance that the financials are free from material misstatement. We can't give absolute assurance because we can't test every transaction. The financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinion. There's a couple of different items and schedules listed there in their page numbers. Those are required supplementary information and they are unaudited. And the internal control letter pages are listed there as well, but that will be discussed later. So the first slide is on the enrollment over the last five years. It's been fairly consistent. The change from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year twenty was an increase of three point oh four, which is about a half of percent. These next couple of slides show a comparison to last year and a couple of different breakdowns by grade and where they're served. I'm not really gonna go over those a whole lot has, there wasn't a whole lot of change. So looking at slide six, this is the statement in deposition. It is essentially a snapshot in time had at June thirtieth. On full accrual. So it's a little bit different than the revenues and expenses that you look at for budgeting and everything else. But looking at the changes from last year and the current and non capital section, that increase is a combination of an increase in your tax receivable. Of a hundred and eighty one thousand. That was due to an increase in your tax levy. There was also an increase in the amount due from the state of a hundred and ninety four thousand, offset by a decrease in the prepaid of about seventy seven thousand. And then looking at your capital assets there, that change is strictly just the depreciation expense. There wasn't any capital asset additions or disposals in fiscal year twenty.
Brenda, is that a hundred and eighty one thousand or two hundred and eighty one thousand?
For the change in the tax receivable?
Yeah.
A hundred and eighty one thousand.
Oh, there's two hundred on there.
So the current and that's included in that. There's multiple items in that two hundred and eighty one.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, you're good. And then looking at the deferred outflows of resources, the long term liabilities and the deferred inflows of resources. That includes a couple of things, but the two main ones are items related to your OPEB and pension. They are amounts that are determined by an actuary. Essentially, if you had to pay it all back, that's what you would have to pay. But in reality, it's easier to think of it like, think of it like a mortgage where you're paying a little bit over a long period of time. The net impact of that in fiscal year twenty of both of those was a increase in expense of six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. For a little bit of a insight into how much a simple change in an actuarial assumption and one of the things that they use for their calculations. The change last year was a decrease in expense of one point seven million. So that's quite a swing from one year to the other. On the liability side with the current liabilities, that change was three hundred and seventy thousand and that includes a drop in severance payments and some COVID impacted activity related things. So there, those liabilities are down. And then in that long term liabilities includes that payment of bond of three hundred and fourteen thousand as well. Any more questions on this slide? Okay. And looking at the general fund, fund balance. The non spendable, the prepaid there that dropped, the apple and kinetic leasing items dropped off. So all that's left is a prepaid special assessment. Looking at the restricted, those are all based off of state statutes and things that need to be restricted. That increases three hundred and eighty three thousand. The committed and assigned did not change. So we're just asking that you keep those in mind and keep looking at those and update them if they need to be for projects that are in any plan or anticipated. For a total general fund increase in fund balance of two hundred and ninety seven thousand. This is about fifteen percent. And we'll look into this fund a little bit more later too.
Brenda, is there anything about the boosters funds that go through the school or not?
Lindsay shaking her head no.
No.
How do we keep track of that?
The booster clubs are set up as their own entity. They don't, they have their own federal tax ID and they're completely separate from the district. So we we don't have authority over those funds. We just work with them. More on a cooperative level, you know, they raise funds through through our students and then they in return will help out with things that those students, depending on the organization and what they need. But they're they're not our, they're a completely separate legal entity from the school.
So they don't, the school does not, the money does not run through the school in any way?
That is correct. There might be some ins and outs where they we paid for something and they end, because it came through on an invoice and they may have to reverse versus, but the, it's just an in and out and it's very little. I mean, they're completely separate. It's just that just happens every rarely.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? So then looking at the other funds with the food service that increased about seventy four thousand. A lot of that was due to the COVID relief monies from the state and the federal government. Again, community service fund. So there was a drop in revenues, but there was also a decrease in expenses. The drop in expenses was more than the revenues. So the the loss wasn't as big as it has been in prior years. But overall, this fund was hurt by COVID. And then debt service fund is what it is based off of levies and bond payments. Wrong way. So this slide shows a visual representation of the breakdown of the fund balance in the general fund over the last five years. The next couple of slides will show the food service and community service funds as well. I don't have a whole lot to say on it because it's, we kind of go over it in other slides, but it's kind of a, it's a cool visual representation of the breakdown. So you can see that increase there. Keep going the right way here. Food service, that increase, it had been dropping. So that increase helped that fund, but we'll have to see what happens in future years. And community service fund has been on a downward trend. So looking at the current year operating results, comparing the final budget to the actual numbers based off of just strictly fiscal year twenty. So looking at the general fund revenues, the revenues came in higher than budgeted. This was due to any insurance proceeds that were received after the final budget was approved. And then there was also an increase in the general education aid due to an increase in the enrollment from the time of budget. And then on the expenditure side for the general fund, those came in under budget like Lindsay was mentioning in the truth and taxation, the the savings. There was some savings of expenses due to timing and also COVID. COVID changed the budget since it was approved in April, so that there was definitely some effects there. Long term facility maintenance. That budget was based on a ten year plan, but COVID delayed those items. So now there's a reserve being built up for those, those projects that will still need to be completed. And then those budget savings were a hundred and sixty one thousand. And then there was other savings related to not needing subs. There was no sporting events, so both transportation costs were saved as well as coaching and referee. And then there was a saving and utilities and custodial supplies as well.
Can you explain to me what the community service fund is?
That's where your revenue and expenses run through for summer rec, preschool, so little warriors. Any ECFE events. It's also gonna include non public aid and expenses that expenses that go out that are owed to the non public schools. But the the majority of the cost is gonna be your community programs, your summer rec programs, and then your preschool, school readiness dollars. That's the majority of that community service fund.
Okay, thank you.
And then looking at the food service fund, so those revenues also came in higher. There was an increase in the number of meals served under the summer food program during COVID than were projected. And then in the community service fund, so those revenues were under due to COVID, there wasn't any summer rec or any camps. And then the pool was also closed. And then on the expenditure side, because there was no programs, you didn't have to pay the salaries and benefits to run them. And then there was also a saving in transportation. And then again with the pool.
Did we get any revenue from the COVID situation for those expenditures for that? Like for hold in some of the meals and stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why you see a jump actually in the revenues is because what they instead of running under the normal food service program, it was run under the summer food program and that means that everyone from a year old to eighteen years is free, no matter. You don't have to fill out an application that's not based upon income or the statute that they put in place for free and reduced, everybody claims, and then the reimbursement rate is higher and that's all federal dollars. The food service program, the normal national food service program is a state and federal combination of claims. So there's, there's always money coming in based upon your free and reduced, but when we switch to the summer food program, the free and reduced went away and everyone was considered free and that reimbursement rate was higher, so.
So we did get that done?
That is correct, yep.
Good.
Anything else on this slide before I move on? Hearing none. So this was looking at the general fund revenues and expenditures over the last five years. So again, like Lindsay mentioned, you can kind of see pretty drastically here that that drop in expenditures. So that drop ended up being about one point two six billion dollars. There was a lot of factors that went into this change, though. The first was that there was two hundred and thirty nine thousand in fiscal year nineteen that was related to one time payments for the parking lot project that the general fund had to pay for. And there was also a hundred and five thousand dollars less in LTFM due to COVID, but that went into building a reserve. Those bigger projects will still need to happen and be paid for. There was thirty five thousand dollars less in fiscal year twenty for costs related to the twenty first century program because fiscal year twenty or nineteen was the last year of that program. And then there was almost a hundred and seventy three thousand dollars less in transportation due to COVID. And then accounting standards require that we record the TRA's direct contribution for Gatsby sixty eight. So essentially we record a revenue and record an expense. That dropped from last year. It was two hundred and eleven thousand dollars less. However, because it's a revenue and expense recorded, there is no, there is zero effect on the bottom line, but it did decrease those expenses. There was forty eight thousand dollars less in retirement benefits. There was about seventy five thousand dollars less in sub costs for salary and benefits. And lastly, there was three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars less in fiscal year twenty for salaries and benefits for budgeted reductions due to budgetary needs, retirements and staff shoveling and shoveling and efficiencies. So there's like eight different reasons for why that drop occurred. And then looking at all of the governmental funds, comparing the different sources for where they come from. Not a whole lot of a significant change in the federal sources there. You can see that that increased eighty thousand. That includes that summer food revenue that Lindsay was explaining with the kids one to eighteen getting that money. And then there's that insurance recovery money for water damage to the gym. And then the drop in the sales and other conversion of assets. There was less sales to pupils and adults in the food service fund because of COVID and the closing of the schools in March. But overall, it's less than a percent change, so pretty immaterial. And then on the expenditure slide side, excuse me. Salaries and benefits is down pretty substantially, but these were budgeted reductions. Purchase services is down one point one million. This is a combination of a few items as well. There was eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars less in fiscal year twenty. There was a parking lot project last year that was wrapped up. There's a hundred and five less in the LTFM. And then again, the less transportation, which was a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars plus. Supplies and materials that drop, there was a budget reduction of a hundred and seventy one thousand in supplies and equipment for budgetary purposes. That decrease was a little bit less, so ended up going a little bit over. Debt service is strictly based off the payment schedule and has Lindsay said that will be paid off in fiscal year twenty one. And then the other expenditures, so that includes that expense side of the TRA direct contribution that I mentioned, that was two hundred and eleven plus. And then there was also a change to the joint powers agreement with the pool. That change took effect in January for some cost savings. So then after the the numbers and everything in the financial statements, there's three additional compliance reports. Two are required by the state and one by government auditing standards. The first one that's required by the state is on Minnesota League compliance. Unfortunately, the district was under collateralized at June thirtieth, twenty twenty. The balance at the bank exceeded FDIC coverage and their pledge collateral. Action has since been taken to increase the collateral to cover this, so. And then on student activity compliance, there was no non compliance issues noted. And then on government auditing standards, there's two parts to that letter. The first is on internal control and we noted two significant deficiencies. Neither of these are new. The first is limited segregation of duties. This isn't something that's likely to go away for such a small district. No one person should have access to the physical assets and the accounting records or to all phases of a transaction. So we're just recommending that the district continue to implement procedures and oversight as mitigating factors to reduce that risk where they can. And then the second is auditor prepared financial statements. So we prepare them based on the district data, but it's in their best interest to continue this practice due to the time and complexity requirements with it. And then as far as compliance and other matters, there was no instances of non compliance noted.
Brenda, we've been talking about that compliance, that limited segregation duty. Is there, is there any thoughts behind that? What can be changed or not?
As far as how to get rid of it?
Yeah.
So you would have to limit the access in SMART so that one person can't cut the checks and enter everything. Also, you'd have to really make sure you separate the review processes. We have seen a district do it, but they have more personnel to split those duties with. With having only Lindsay and Jody, that would be pretty, pretty difficult to do.
So would that be in compliance for the state or not, what we're doing right now?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, you, you said you gotta have more people looking it over, but does the state, is that, are they okay with what we're doing right now or not? Or is it a big push to get it changed or not?
This finding is pretty typical in districts our size, just because when you look at from a financial standpoint versus an internal control standpoint and you put all those things together, you normally don't have enough individuals to separate everything, but we have we have internal, internal controls in place to mitigate the risk. So essentially there's, there's checks and balances, but there's still not enough of us to completely segregate. So as long as we have internal controls and we don't have that. If those checks and balances disappear, it would be a problem, but we do have those checks and balances in place. So I think the only thing the state looks at is to to make sure that we are getting our financial statement audit done and we don't have lots of findings in regards to internal controls.
Okay, I know we've been dealing this with this for quite a while. That's why I asked the question. I know it's been hard.
Well, and it's pretty typical. You could pull financial statements from many districts of our size at smaller, some even maybe even a little bit bigger, but this is a really hard finding to get rid of because you just can't financially afford to have enough people in the district office. Because you just can't financially afford to have enough people in the district office.
Right. And that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, but I mean, I don't know how you would get away from it without hiring more people and you're. Then you're going backwards.
Correct, so that's why it's just important to have those checks and balances in place, so, so that we. We mitigate the risk that there is because of limited segregation of duties.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, uh, so that was all based on the financial statements, so now looking to the management letter. Professional standards require that certain items be communicated at the completion of the audit. The first is on accounting practices, this is management's responsibility and they're shown in note one of the financial statements. There were no difficulties encountered, all corrections and adjustments have been approved and are reflected in the financial statements. There was no disagreements with management, management will provide a letter stating that all essential information was provided to us for the audit. There was no consultations with other accountants to our knowledge, this would be similar to obtaining a second opinion or having a second audit done. And lastly, any discussions with management prior to the audit is not a condition of hiring or retaining us as your auditors. And then as a result of our audit, we have a couple of recommendations. The first two are uh, based on prior year items, uh, credit card policy. We're recommending that a formal policy be approved, adopted and implemented by the district. The second is authorized signers, we're just recommending that these be updated uh, with various depositories with the changes in personnel that have taken place in the district office. Something that we're also continuing to monitor that has previously been in the management letter. Um, are those long outstanding checks, but we recognize that uh, with the personnel changes and the steps that have been taken that. We just wanted to make sure that you were where we are still monitoring that, what steps have been started to resolve that. And then as far as current your items, our student activity funds, um, so we noted a few different items. This is the first year that we've actually tested the student activity funds, this was due to Gatsby eighty four, which was implemented in fiscal year twenty. We previously had not tested because it's been under board control. But with Gatsby eighty four, all student activity funds for all districts went under board control, so they all need to be tested. Um, but the issues that we noted were with statement of purpose forms not being filled out, lists of officers not being submitted. There was also expenditures that were not signed by the advisor and the student treasurer or representative. And not all activities, um, not all student activities had activity the last two fiscal years. And then the last item is on Gatsby statement number ninety five, so this is actually a new Gatsby due to COVID. That is delaying the implementation of multiple standards, including the lease standard. We're recommending that the district take advantage of this, but still work towards implementing that, which would be accumulating all the information. Um, on all leases, both those operating in capital and those that the district pays and receives money for. Um, just to help when that time does come to implement that, um, but has always CDS is available to assist and help with that. As a closing remark, just thank you again for um, allowing CDS to do the audit and thank you again to the district office for helping us. Get the audit completed. My contact information and Jim's is on there, um, and the district office has it too, if you have any questions or comments after.
So are you taking over Jim's spot or is he still gonna be around?
He's still with us, but he's retired, so he's enjoying retirement.
Well, tell him hi from us.
I will.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thanks Brenda, for all your work.
Can we get copies of both those PowerPoints?
I think I sent those out, didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
Uh, you should have copies of our TR, true in taxation and you should have Brenda's PowerPoint. And then you should have a copy of the ent- entire audit also. Okay.
I'll have to look here, okay, thanks.
Okay. Didn't realize.
The other questions for Brenda or for Lindsay?
Thank you Lindsay for letting us know all that stuff.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you Lindsay.
Yes, thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number two, accept resignation of John Desatell, school board member effective November twenty third, twenty twenty. Creating a vacancy on the school board for basically this next month.
Don't move Sagetown.
Motion is made by Sagetown. I will second that. Uh, any discussion or questions about anything? I would like to thank John for his, all of his years of service to the board and hope that he has a good. Good life up north with his family.
I would like to thank him for all his service in the Bold District for the years he's been here. Including teacher and board member.
Yep, good point, thanks Jeff. All right, with that, we will vote and we will begin with Jeff.
I would like to say no, but I can't, so I'll say yes.
Okay, and Sandy.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. All right, number three is the one that I added, it's the resolution of school board supporting Form A. Application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. So since this is a resolution and it's not very long, but um, it is a resolution and we'll have to read it. I need to get a motion and second first before we do this. And I, Dale, do you have, I don't know if Derek is with us, but do you have any more information on Form A? It was something we should have done last week and it, it looks like we are. Asking the Minnesota State High or Minnesota High School League Foundation. For a grant or funding to assist our school district with. Payment of offsetting student activity phase fees.
It's what, that's an annual thing, the, the foundation or the high school league has a foundation that uh. That districts can apply towards the grants that can offset some student activity costs. And so that's what that's uh, that's what that consists of and uh, and um. Derek is, and has made that uh, request annually and so it's been received well and so. It's dollars available go towards our student athletes, so our activities.
Thank you, this must be something I don't quite remember for some reason, but. Yeah.
I don't remember it, that, that's.
I don't either, but.
I, I can confirm that it definitely is an annual resolution, I do recall.
Yes.
Many, many years that we've been doing this.
Do we get anything from it?
Normally, it's earlier in the year, we do it like in August or September normally.
And that would, that would make sense.
And then it's oftentimes it's used for transportation and things like that that cut costs of athletics or activities, so. And it is, it is, they have the foundation and they need to give those dollars back to the school districts, that's why it's there and, and they give it back.
So is that, is that with this new deal that we're talking about, the state high school league, has anything to do with that?
No, this is separate, this is, has always been in place, Jeff, it's uh, it's nothing new. Um, the, what we'll be dealing with, with high school league going uh, forward now is, is there additional fees that they're going to. Call, charge the district simply because of what has happened to tournaments and things the past, uh, since the COVID thing, so. Uh, financially, they're struggling right now and that's what that plan and, and they met again a week ago and they did lower. Some of the fees and so that'll be coming to us, I think in February. And so.
Okay.
But this is separate from, from the, that fee.
Okay, thanks Dale.
You're welcome.
Jill, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for, and could we get a second please?
I'll second Jill.
Thank you, Tracy, and are there any further questions before we, actually I'll read it and then if you guys have any questions. It is what it is, but we will, we will read it. Resolution of school board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation, whereas the Minnesota. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the district number twenty five thirty four school board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities and. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist. School districts in recognizing, promoting and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and finance programs. Therefore be resolved that the Bold School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League. Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. So are there any, any questions on that? All right, hearing, not a question, we will go to a vote. And we will begin with Jamie.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I, motion carries. All right, moving on to number four is facilities update and I will turn it over to Mr. Bransoy.
Just to share that uh, the paperwork has been all. Sent to with the state, with the Department of Education and, and the county and as far as the bond. The timeline was the end of last week and now all the paperwork was submitted and so that's all taken care of, so. Now we'll, we'll plan on moving forward, lots of work to be done in the near future and uh. The timeline or deadlines will be coming at us very quickly, it's a short calendar here and so. Uh, we'll uh, keep you informed the best we can and uh, but Ryan is working with this as well as Mike and uh. And so we'll be moving forward with that and planning for, for the bond in February, so, okay? Any questions for me at this point? Try to go on.
Yes, you sure, sure may.
The last item that I put on the agenda is online learning plan and that we started today. Uh, remember last time we discussed, we talked about. Um, going uh, completely online with preschool through K through twelve, and so that's what we're doing right now. And so, one thing that we talked about in our last meeting was the uh. The governor's uh, order, executive order of providing thirty minutes per day. Of prep time to come out of instructional time for teachers to prepare for hybrid learning and for distant learning. Or online learning, what we call it, and so we've been tossing around, uh, that needed to be in place by. Starting uh, today and so what we're looking at is taking a block of time, those thirty minutes uh, times five will give us a hundred and fifty minutes. And putting, walking that for the Wednesday afternoon and allowing that amount of time to be all in one group. And so that the teachers can have a hundred and fifty minutes to uh, to plan for the, for the. Distant learning and for hybrid if we're going back to that and so. Uh, that's where we're at right now with it and depending on the numbers of what's happening in the county. Um, they completely, they continue escalating. And the numbers that came out this last week, uh, out, uh, well today, the number per. Per ten thousand is, is two hundred and sixty four. And back in uh, September and October, we were worried when we were hitting twenty five or thirty. And end of October, that count was at forty eight point five nine. And so from October thirtieth to, to the month of November, it's gone up to two hundred and, two hundred and sixty four. Yeah, per ten thousand, so it's really climbing and continues to move that quickly and uh. So we've taken these, this fourteen days now and hopefully uh, since uh, Thanksgiving and hopefully that will. That number, well, we're hoping will subside, but we're, we're not, we're not sure and so. The advisory council meets Thursday and they'll be talking about this number and trying to figure out where are we going to go with the learning plan and. Um, we all know as far as staff and parents and students, we'd love to be in school, in person. We know that's the best, but I think by getting them out of here last Friday, uh, the turnaround of the. People that have, have uh, come up with a positive test on COVIDs is unbelievable, so. Um, I just wanted to fill you in on that and we don't know. How long the, the in the online learning is going to take place, the distant learning, what we're doing right now and so. But we'll watch the numbers and, and try and keep you informed of what's, what's happening with our learning plan, but right now it's everybody out and. The teachers are working, doing all distant learning right now and, and uh, it's a real challenge and so, but. Uh, we did this last spring and I think it wasn't very successful and I think the teachers have worked hard to. Putting their plans together and uh, working with the individual students and families and uh. Uh, doing an excellent job and uh, so we'll keep doing it and. The struggle we have is uh, when we talked about it last time is homework and students. Taking it serious and knowing that they need to get their work turned in in order to get grades and so. Um, it's a struggle, but we had a meeting last week with the, with the mean confirm meeting and just the. Uh, issues with COVID and uh, and the work with the, the stress level of working with staff and students and parents is really. Uh, very high and so we gotta keep working at how we can uh. Deal with each other's, the students' needs and meeting those needs and families and, and staff and so. We're trading in areas we've never been in before and so it's hard to know from day to day what, what's gonna happen, so. We'll try and keep you informed the best we can and uh, hoping that number will. Peak and start going down the other way, so that's all for now, thank you.
Dale, you, can I ask you some que- a question?
Sure.
You were talking about that Wednesday. Is that uh, during the day or is that in the morning, at night, what were you talking that? Uh, getting together for the.
Time, we're looking at Wednesday afternoons. And that'll be a block where it would not be instructional time and it would start like at twelve thirty. And run the afternoon and so that's what we're looking at right now. And that, we're in distant learning now, so it's not gonna impact anything other than uh, there will not be instruction going on at that time. For the students.
Will you be able to keep the students? Um, how do you wanna say it? Coming, keeping entertained or whatever you wanna call it for those two hours or, uh, with that, for their homework or?
They'll be working, they'll, they'll be working on their homework, yeah, and that's what they'll be doing during that time, it won't be, the teachers won't be delivering it. They'll deliver it in the morning and then the afternoon, then that'll be the students' time to, to work on uh, their homework and everything, so, yeah, you're right.
So have you consulted any parents on this at all or?
They're.
How that would work for them?
This is what we're, we're communicating that now because that was just, decision was just made and so that's what we're trying to. Get that information out and so. It shouldn't.
Cause I know.
It shouldn't.
Some of the daycare. Some of the daycare could be the problem, is where I'm talking.
Well, they're, they're there every day now. And so that will. And so that will, it's just that it's gonna change their, their instructional time. But they'll still be, they're not in buildings now. They're in either daycare or they're at home. Now, all the students are, so.
All right.
Okay.
All righty.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from tonight?
Any other questions? As I find myself muted again, cause I didn't wanna cough really loud.
Any questions on our truth and taxation that you've thought about now or the budget, the audit that Brenda gave? Any thoughts that you've gotten since they've left and Brenda's done a very thorough job of taking over with her group and, and been very involved, lots of questioning and and lots of checking and really, and the office staff has worked very closely with them and it seemed to go very well this year. And so we're glad to have it done.
Dale, she had mentioned something about that active, student activity fund. What's, what's all that about?
You mean in the audit?
Yeah.
Oh, there was a change in standards that happened as of July first. It did change a lot for Bold because you've always been under board control, but with that standard, even though things didn't change a lot, they're requiring more. So it used to be under board control, meant you follow the district policy. Well, that's what we do. They get, they make a request, they get a purchase order approved prior to purchasing the item. It gets approved by the department head and then it gets ordered. Well, now they're kinda taking a twist when it used to be not under board control. You had to have an advisor and a student sign. So they kinda merged the two together. So it's just a little bit of an undertaking because we didn't really switch what we were doing, but now we have to switch our procedures. So it's just kind of a work in process and figuring out how we're going to merge the two together to change based upon the accounting standard change.
So this activity fund, what, what is, what, what part of that is it like for lyceum or what, what is it?
No, it's, it's for students only. So you have your student council, you have your FFA, you have your class accounts, you have your elementary fund, you have your national honor society. Basically, it's student run with an advisor. They fundraise to raise revenue and then they can choose how to expense. So like FFA does their big fruit sale every year.
No, no.
In turn, then they can use it on going to conferences and different things that the FFA students choose to do.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a student body organization.
Did we not, didn't we approve those things in the past?
Correct, we did. But, so, so it used to be where you, it's, there was under board control. So essentially, it's just like any other expense coming out of the district where it got approved by the department head. Now they want an advisor and a student signature. So it's changing the way we have to change somehow to the approval process because now they want an advisor and student. Where as before, we were following the district policy, which would be to get an approved purchase order, which would be your department head. Not your advisor and your student advisor.
Oh, okay.
So it's just changing. We just need to change our procedures and figure out how we can easily do that.
So that's something we have to do a policy on or not?
Um, it probably wouldn't hurt because now it's gonna differ from the district policies a little bit. We're also probably gonna have to figure out a new form for the advisors to fill out instead of doing a purchase order. So it's just kinda little things like that that we're gonna have to figure out what works smoothly.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? One thing that I just wanted to quick bring up before we adjourn and we had some confusion last week on our December meeting. It is December twenty-first. At seven PM, it will be on Zoom and we'll see where we're at at that point, but let's just probably plan on on Zoom for sure, obviously. And Mr. Bransoy will let you know if it's anything different. I just wanted to bring that up though, so we know, we're on the same page for date. And with that, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move Benson.
Thank you, Sandy.
Second Sagatow.
And seconded by Sagatow. And we will go right away to voting here and we will start with Jeff.
No, I think we should keep going.
You can.
Yes.
You sure can. I'm not gonna join you. Tracy?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right. Go forth and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you very much.